So, I'm gonna open up the meeting officially. So recognizing forum, the chair opens up the Tuesday, June 25th, 2024 meeting of the Planning Board. So this meeting is a Raisin' Place workshop with neighborhoods impacted by Raisin' in Place. We're here at Mashpee Public Library in the events room at 64 Stiefel Street, Mashpee, Massachusetts. I just wanna welcome everybody and thank you for being involved in your community and coming to the Planning Board meeting. It's a very different format than we usually have. It's a workshop. We are being, you know, recorded and videotaped. The video quality might not be that good. I know some people have their back to the camera, but we're just gonna go with it and thank Mashpee TV for being here. So what I'm gonna do first off is I'm gonna pass around, thank you, Michael, all these papers, a sign and sheet. I think it's kind of important that we know who is here and if you can put some contact information on there, whether it's a good email or a phone number, that way when we convene again on the matter, we can easily contact you. So I'll start. I think there are handouts. I don't know if there's enough everybody, but maybe we can share. Okay. So just a little history. I was at a meeting and somebody, John, and some other members of the Pompanassee Community did some public comment and I went over and I said, "Hi, what's going on?"
We said, "Hi."
And John said, "Hi, Pat," and said, "Hey, there's..." That's a good reminder for everybody, right? And he said, "Oh, what should we do? How do we meet with the Planning Board?" I go, "Let's have a workshop." This is something that the town has been looking at for a while. In a packet, you'll see the zoning bylaw as it is right now. It's just a small little piece in there. There also seems to be a draft proposed change.
That's the last draft you reviewed in the last session. Got them all, it's two weeks, isn't it?
And was that in 2023 or was it that long ago?
I think it was like a four or five years.
Yeah. And I think we decided, based on the public comment, that it wasn't ready to go to town meeting yet for a proposed change. Since then, I think there's been a couple of meetings down in the Pompanassee Beach area. Evan, you went to one, right?
Yes.
Yeah. And I think that your own organization, and I know it's not just Pompanassee Beach Association here today, but you have a subcommittee that's for the weekends. So just by a show of hands, who kind of is involved in the Pompanassee Beach Association? Yeah. So, is there any other neighborhoods here today? What neighborhood are you from?
U.C. Berry.
U.C. Berry, thank you. Yeah?
Briarwood.
Briarwood. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry.
Pirates Cove.
Pirates Cove, okay. All right, thanks. So I don't know, Evan, if you wanted to start off or you wanted to go right to the questions?
Yeah, I guess I can frame my understanding of what brought us here today. Raisin' Place has been a topic of discussion since the year it started, the year 2018, 2019, when the first, well, the current bylaw, 17417, one was passed. And it's remained a topic of discussion since that time, especially with, I'd say, relatively recent appeals of various special permit decisions, which let me wonder how we might be able to better achieve consistency and predictability in the decision-making process for the board of appeals by offering some definition to what would constitute substantial detriment to the neighborhood. And so that's always been the, I'd say, my primary goals in doing work on the draft were creating predictability for non-owning property owners and for, but also for regulatory boards reviewing applications to Raisin' Place homes. It has often been a topic of discussion that has borne out of the Pompanassee neighborhood and been floodplain-specific. A lot of our concerns or concerns shared by boards and residents have been about development within the hundred-year floodplain and the implications of expanding impermeable surface and structural coverage of lot area. And so I suppose that's it. I think that there's interest for many different groups from many different neighborhoods to understand the existing conditions. And I guess there's also, there seems to be a willingness to better define or understand how we can continue to extend or alter non-conformities or not, depending, I suppose, on this discussion. I think everyone has a variable understanding of the current situation too. So I guess this is the opportunity to ask questions and understand the issues and opportunities before us that pertain to Raisin' in Place.
Great. So I heard more predictability, issues about the floodplain, which of course is connected with our water quality. What do we do with non-conformities? Are we trying to get rid of them? Are we trying to decrease them? Or is it just wild out west? Anything happens? Based on some previous public comment, you know, when we looked at this most recently, we had two sections of the bylaw, one that would, you know, apply to Pompanassee and one that would apply townwide. It kind of seems like people want this to be uniform, townwide. I know I introduced, you know, the idea of a form-based code, redevelopment plan, so there are some bylaws that if you hit the architectural and site design standards, you can get your building property by right. You know, if you check all those boxes off and... There's some instances where redevelopment in these areas and non-conform law is by right, right? If you...
In the draft bylaw, the proposed bylaw, there is an incentive to not expand your structure by allowing you a byright opportunity to redevelop your property if you say you need assistance, lack, or do setbacks, et cetera.
And that would be, you know, going right to the building commissioner and I think our building department is well enough staff to deal with that. Some building departments are like, "No, we still want the special permit." But I think our building department handles it. So with those thoughts in mind, kind of like what we're looking for and of course, thinking about how we have a priority of clean water in town. We also have a priority to maintain our hometown character, right? You know, do you wanna go around the table or do people wanna just be called upon? Who wants to go first?
I'm happy to go first.
Great.
Because I hope that we didn't...
When I like to see your agreements about this plan and what you take should be, or if you may like it right now, the way it's written. I like to hear what you don't like about it and what you can like about it.
Sure, I can speak. We have, let me take a giant step back. And first of all, I thank you guys for actually putting this on hold and reading Mark's workshop with us about it. That is greatly appreciated. That's the goal of a good plan, right? So just at the outset, thanks for that. We've had, I think, half of us have commented about that. And I've got some handouts I can deal with. In general terms, there were things that we're concerned about. I'll go straight to your question, of course, and say things we wanna make sure we get done. We'd like to see some discussion about setbacks. I know that's already addressed. We've been very specific in asking our community about that and you've got some very positive feedback in terms of we wanna make sure that setbacks are respected. The neighbors want that. So we're in general favor of setbacks being respected. Lot coverage, not seeing any particular change towards lot coverage ratios in our area yet, but we're certainly willing to talk about that. We've seen provisions in the draft amendment about permeable materials. I think that means a little bit of wordsmithing, but in general, I think, again, you've asked our community that if you're doing a reconstruction of somewhere in general, would you be okay with taking up your driveway and replacing it with permeable material? In generally, we have positive response to that. So that's a, yeah. So in your opinion, turn, you have a crush stone or you have a seashell driveway, are you okay with that? You know, we're not sure, we feel that strongly about taking on someone's patio, if they put a patio in there and they've had it for years, they should be able to have that come out. I've heard the questions and concerns that you guys have raised about specific cases, specific cases in our area where you feel like discretionary review hasn't gone as well as it should have, so you're tightening up certain standards. I just wanna make sure that to the extent that we're tightening up discretionary review, everybody be careful what you ask for because the intent of discretionary review is always for that one condition where something unique is about the property, it's a little bit different. You tie it with hands, you know, you wanna be careful about how much you tie them. So I think specific findings that the CBA has to make maybe, as it's going through Raisin' Place, would be useful to make sure that the conditions that we all want to see are met when a discretionary review happens. We do wanna make sure, and this is kind of complicated, we wanna make sure that we're encouraging smart growth management. We're all concerned about the law. We're all concerned about, when is everything gonna get sued? We're all concerned about IA systems, floodplain, everything else. We wanna make sure that what we're doing, however, is encouraging people, as they're rebuilding property, to do smart growth. I don't just wanna see a prohibition and then nothing gets approved over time. So there are, you know, there are various cor instances I could give for that, but, you know, one would be, you're gonna, if you're in a floodplain, you gotta take everything out of the basement. The question is where you're gonna put? Are you gonna give people the credit for whatever square footage you have to add to bring it out of the basement? So encourage people to take that out of the basement and work with the floodplain, ideas like that. One thing we wanna make clear, and I believe I understand, that additions to homes are treated differently than tearing down and rebuilding the home, getting a special permit. What we've heard a lot of clear from our community is, and I think this is the most important point that I wanna bring, is we have a lot of longtime residents in our community. Harold's been here since time immemorial. I think some of us at this table, forty, fifty, sixty years, we can go back, there you go. A lot of people really don't wanna and can't afford to tear down their house and move into Raisin' Place. So if somebody is looking to put a small addition on their house so that they can age in place, maybe put the, have the bedroom on the first floor, it's upstairs, a modest increase to the size of the house that complies with setbacks and complies with the other rules that ought to be something that they should be able to do. Now, as part of that, should they be taking the driveway? I think, sure, that could be considered. If there's a cesspool on the property, should we be moving to a septic system? Sure, that's a great time to do it. As I said, that would then encourage people to make improvements to their property that they're held for quality. Then I think we gotta just discuss also what's going on with respect to issues in the floodplain. So, you know, jurisdictionally, the floodplain belongs to the county. And I don't know that boards shouldn't be jumping into other boards jurisdictional areas. So if you get done with your floodplain issues, sort of, be done with that. The other issue, just in Pompanassee, that we are experiencing a lot of problems with, which really is not a reason to replace issue, but I wanna bring it to your attention, is drainage. We get new houses built in Pompanassee. All of a sudden, that street now has a drainage problem. And the homeowner tells me, "That was always there." And I say, "I walked the street, it wasn't there before you put your house up." To the extent that, again, I know we're trying to keep drainage treated on the property with dry wells and other things, but every time that happens, we're spending a lot of money we don't have dealing with a high water table and drainage issues that just don't work for us. So I can talk in more general terms. I don't wanna monopolize the discussion, but I can come back and raise a few other points that we have. In general, those are some of the issues that we see and a lot of the things that we agree with you guys on in general. And I'd like to be able to go back to my community and say, "Okay, the planning board's gonna work with us in some of these issues."
So again, I'm not sure that we have really made consensus just because we haven't gone far enough on that, but thank you for feeling that you agree with the point. Just wanna, just wanna note, I'm getting a lot of, a lot of different information about what's really permeable and impermeable and what's the best for our type of soils and water issues. So just that we're gonna be doing a lot of drilling into that and I hope that people will help us with that. Otherwise, everything else, I understood everything else you said.
Yeah. I like most of your things. It seems reasonable that we can put that into this.
Yeah, I did summarize it. I can give you these, I can give out these handouts out, but I figured I'll let everybody to talk.
Hey, do you ever think about raising that street? That's what's horrible.
Which street? All of our streets.
Oh, I love that one. I love that one. It was a short drive.
It does. I can, I don't know if that's a term you need to be meeting.
It's a workshop, go for it.
I can address that. We did a long-term study this winter of our roads because our roads are sixty years old and our private roads. So repairing and replacing those roads is on us. I've talked at various points over time at TPW about the fact that the water table in our area just keeps rising. One or two of our streets are under water a lot. So we just saw the cost. We had a little bit of, I won't use the word "cost," but we had...
What else have we used?
I know, I know, I don't know what else to use. But we're trying to figure out, you know, it's a significant cost for us to renew the road and at the same time to renew the drainage. What we're sort of trying to weigh now, we kind of stopped thinking about it is, what role does sewage play in this? If we're gonna see some sewage brought down into Pompanassee at some point, do we wanna be tearing up our roads, repairing the drainage, paving the roads over? And then we gotta tear them up in ten years because sewer comes down the street. I think that our community, we talked about it at our meetings, totally in favor of sewage and paying what it takes to bring sewer down in Pompanassee. So, and I'd love to do, you know, for me, if you guys were putting the sewer in, that's the time I think we would repave our streets. I can spend another half an hour if you want.
No, I would do a nice.
We don't want to do the...
I was taking a get on license for a family there. And I'm bringing, I can, come on, my family will go.
I just like that in common. Pompanassee has a resilience problem. You know, we know most of it's in a floodplain. So we've been saying to our own community, we've had six meetings, we have a problem, we need to figure out how to deal with it. That's the right way to deal with it. Planning is doing things, not helping things. And we need to take responsibility for our community, which includes roads and things. But we're looking at hiring an engineer who can help us build out a resilience strategy that's a good idea for the neighborhood. So before we start spending money on roads and things, we wanna obviously get a lot smarter around what's the long-term vision. Then we can figure out how the town works with us when that happens, but we know what we do.
Me and Evan, you guys.
What's that?
Yeah, me, side by side with you guys. We've got sixty-one miles of roads and three hundred drains. So it's a topic of conversation, probably every five minutes.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
But we've gotta try to a plan, you know, and really try to get a lot smarter than all these bits and bobs.
All right, so, so, yeah. How about a comment from this side of the table and this side of the table? So does anybody on this, this line that would like to say something?
Your neighborhood. You, you?
Well, I'm finding it very informative what your neighborhood is going through because I feel like ours is kind of on the table that we're gonna anticipate some of these issues.
Excuse me?
What's your neighborhood again?
Pirates Cove.
Pirates Cove. Yeah, and we couldn't, we couldn't hear you that well. So I'm sure the recording didn't get that. So you're gathering information and you're seeing the same types of things in your neighborhood.
What I anticipate.
You anticipate.
Could I ask a Pirates Cove question?
Yeah.
I think that's fully built up. You have still buildable lots.
We have buildable lots.
It's pretty much built up.
Yeah.
You don't have any buildable lot cover.
Not many.
And when they buy a house, they think, "Oh, yeah." My daughter did that before the straits were replaced and they had these one wall up. And they couldn't build a house they really wanted if they had these one wall up. And I pushed this last time because of that. Because people should have a right. If you have those old houses, they were grocery houses, the free fat grocery houses up in that neighborhood, you should have the right to build, long as you can afford it. The setbacks may make a nicer house, you know?
Yeah.
Eric, just to help speedlight things a little, we put it one page together. It better be in, it kind of summarizes our goals.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah. Yeah, so let's cast out the paperwork and then we'll go to Glenn and then somebody on this, get your thoughts together.
So that document, that document was put together by Pompanassee Working Group.
Wait, Dennis, what did you say? What was the last thing you said? Oh, the wall, the retaining that one wall. Yeah.
Do you have a question?
All right.
Do you have any other comments?
We'll have to...
You wanna take mine? Happy for Rob.
Yeah, pass, pass one around over to... No, I think we can share, Rob, I think we're good. Okay, Rob, let's just...
It's okay.
No, Mike and I, yeah, all right. So, all right, so Glenn. It is special. That I can date it. Yeah, so let's go to Glenn.
I think what Dennis said, it gets to the gritty detail, which is, you have to leave a wall to rebuild your house if you don't bring it back to the setbacks, right? Which in Pompanassee is fifteen feet. Fifteen feet is the distance between us. And so to the odd point, section 17417 and the Mashpee's Home all of these allow you to extend your cottage or your house. And if you have a non-conforming part of that, you can make it bigger and rebuild. It's always been there. What Raisin' Replace did to what Dennis says is it says, "Okay, if you rebuild your house, you don't have to put it back to the setbacks." Private to that and said, "If Bob's house is two feet from my lot line, well, he wants to rebuild it and go up there, he has to come back to fifteen feet." And I think when Raisin' Replace was passed, that was one of the big things that was lost. And if you look at some of the disputes that go on or some of the people that come to the zoning board and almost cry, it's, "Oh, my gosh, there's a thirty-four wall going and I'm six feet away from it." And it's sixty feet long. And that was not allowed without... You could extend it, the way they got around extending it. I left a piece of my foundation, my house was done out there by kind of things. I left a piece of my foundation, therefore I'm not raising and replacing, I actually extend it. So I think bringing it back, if you're gonna rebuild, bring it back with the setbacks, it's fifteen feet.
So that's removing the non-conform.
On the setback. And I think we talked about it in Pompanassee. Most everybody agreed with that. I think most everyone who lives there has had themselves or someone... The thing is, you guys look at it from the project perspective. We look at it from, "My gosh, I live next to it or down the street from it." And to Pirates Cove, yes, Pirates Cove, same issue, water destroyings, same issue, John's Pond, which are average lot there. So Raisin' Replace is a townwide bylaw, right? Where you live to, it's kind of that.
So that was really good. Would you, would you mind typing out those comments for us so we get it right in the...
Yes.
It's true.
I have Karen.
Oh, hi, Karen, go right ahead.
I wonder if we could actually take a look at this. I think you all have that in your packet. This is the third iteration.
Oh, can I just get open comments from this?
Go to your own comments.
Yeah, I, I, yeah.
Okay, and then thereafter, maybe we can go through some of the paragraphs and say what's wrong and what's right about it.
Can we also talk about the rules? And you know, as a person, we would love to deal with your rules.
Well, that's what I'm, I'm...
Okay. You're trying to...
I'm trying, I, I, I'm trying to hear from everybody here so that we can kind of figure out those goals. I don't think we're honestly gonna decide on goals tonight.
Oh, sure. No, I didn't know if you could say that on the neighborhood.
I mean, I have that, that kind of, that list at the beginning. They, you know, it's almost like, it's almost like, tonight's kind of like Starfall. Well, it was tested, where are you? What are you seeing? Is there any problems? Anyways, who on the side wants to go?
I want to pick up on it.
Go ahead, March.
Well, we live on two ponds in our neighborhood. Sharon and John pond. A lot of modest-sized houses, one of which I live in. And lives in one. We would not like to see McMansions built where our neighbors have a little traditional cake cottage. I would not like to see even a two-story because they look down on us. But I think I'd like to see restrictions on the Raisin' Place and make sure that these properties don't get bought up by sharks who then build a million-dollar house among all these other smaller properties. Well, that's my concern, one of the...
You know, I just wanna add to that because I feel, you know, when I watch some of these planning and zoning meetings...
Can I just have a hangover?
Oh, my name is Bethany, you're here. You know, some of the issues start with the health department because I don't understand how a home that is being raised and replaced and is becoming double the size is still, the health department is proving it as a two-bedroom house when the plans for the house show five toilets and, like, where is the logic behind, you know, two bed? I mean, how a house doubles in size and it's considered a two-bedroom and they don't have to upgrade their stuff? I mean, I just, that's where I feel like some of these issues begin. Because I feel like by the time it gets to the zoning board, they go, "Okay, health department approved it. Okay, conservation approved it. Okay, approve it." And that's kind of how it works. So I don't have a good understanding of what the health department looks at and determine how a house that's doubling in size remains two-bedroom house. I mean, so...
Anybody else?
I can help with the answer, too.
That's, I, I, yes, you could. But I wanna know from your neighborhood, what's the concerns of your neighborhood? I'm not, I'm not looking for debate between people.
No, no one does.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm looking for right now is it's almost like brainstorming, you know? If we start to debate, we're gonna cut off ideas. So that was an excellent point. How about you two?
We're just talking. I don't think that we're seeing any real problem with this in the U.C. area right now. We're not, we don't have much in the floodplain, I'm aware of.
We do have some floodplains, no question. We have some, but very infrequently. But we basically operate using the town bylaws. Setbacks, when we see a plan, and I've been doing this for twenty years in what's known as the Architectural Review Committee and the Homeowners Association. So the homeowner goes to the homeowners association and asks permission to build this fault. Myself, a registered architect, review those plans. And the one thing that we do is make sure that it's compliant with the bylaws of the community. In regards to setbacks, under that, height... In regards to setbacks, under that, height restrictions and so forth. We don't get into how many bathrooms go into the thing, we leave that to the town, to the Board of Health, who have their bylaws which restrict the number of bedrooms. Even getting, we occasionally get down into what's a bedroom? And there's rules associated with what's a bedroom, so we understand what. The definition by the town is of what is a bedroom. And we've been through that in a number of houses. We occasionally get into issues which we only have one that I'm aware of in the number of years that I've done it. It's height, okay? It sticks within the height restrictions that by law, but it blocks the view. We basically arbitrate view. Somebody higher than us worries about view.
The scenic rights and.
You didn't buy the view when you bought the home, you bought a piece of property. Fortunately, sometimes somebody else's dreams get in the way of your dreams. And we basically stick with the bylaws of the town as best we can. Very infrequently, I think that we step in, we can do that because most of us operate under a special permit. Going back to the nineteen-sixties, the town granted to Seabury. And even though we are not a developer any longer, we are operating independently of the developer, we still very much comply with the ability to operate within the special permit. So we generally speaking arbitrate and are able to satisfy demand by using the bylaws of the community.
Yeah, so you have architectural standards?
Yes.
Would you be willing to share that with the planning board?
I see no hesitation with Dennis.
What is New Seabury? Do you define New Seabury? Bright Cove, New Seabury?
Yeah, fourteen hundred, fourteen hundred and twenty acres is what you see there.
Oh, and that's island as well?
No, fourteen hundred and twenty acre, the six original villages, it's like thirty-four now, about two hundred thousand homes. That's to see.
Does it include, for example, seven seas?
Yeah.
So you guys, so the AR, AR taking the future away, covers all that.
Right.
But includes half of the island.
It includes half of Popinasset Island. After Popinasset Island is very close. The west side, the east side, Seabury, the.
And you don't see any issue with.
West side is Seabury, the left side is independent. Never was included in any of the special arrangements of New Seabury.
And you guys don't have any issues down there?
We do, on the left side, we have the issues. Occasionally, we have issues, but we try to use the bylaws that we've talked about. At left side, they came on board, they said they'd like to work with us and they're not bound by the art, but they're willing to work with us. So we do have some flexibility with setbacks that you can tweak if reasonable. Yeah, exactly. We can override the bylaws if we choose. Do you normally have any lot size issues, people? We push high to comply with the town bylaws, but occasionally you get pushed a little bit. And if it's immaterial, probably irrelevant, we say, let's go.
Yeah, yeah, if you, if you, those architectural guidelines, if you could share that with us, do you have any suggestions?
Sure, it's rather thick.
No, I know, but, you know.
Hundred pages, maybe, something like that.
That, that, you know, you never know. That leads you to Form Based Code, do you know what I mean? And that, that.
Oh, we're sure we do.
Anything with the site design or anything like that?
They're all online at the Peninsula Council website. They're available there. Probably even get down into colors of shingles, colors of paint colors. That's all, that's all.
Well, solves a lot of problems.
And we have no setbacks or setbacks, I mean, you draw the special permit.
Whatever the town bylaws are, we.
When you go by the town bylaws, you don't have that.
Fifty, right, zero law lines. We follow the town zoning laws.
I know you follow the town, but you don't really.
We don't have to. No, all of the properties that were in the special permit when they got the special permit. There are some lots in Bright Coves and Southern Sea that are not. Which is one reason why we try to follow the town laws because you could have, you could be in the special permit and you could be not. Next to each other, so if we allow you to do something and not you, then they call me, so I don't want that to happen. And what basically they say, will we comply? I mean, very rarely do people hit their back up and say, I'm wanting the special permit. The rest of my neighborhood is in it, we'll comply.
Most don't even understand it.
No, exactly.
And there is, and they put up a name, and I apologize for not, I wanted to send that out before this, that really had this problem that people were, they, the housing stock was ready to be redeveloped. And what they did was they adopted Form Based Code so that the character of the neighborhood would be made. So I gotta get that out to everybody too to look at. So if Karen wants to start going over some of the other materials in the packet, is everybody ready to do that? Or does somebody else have something to contribute kind of on this kind of open session?
John, did you want to go over the goals?
Yeah, we wanted to be, touch on our goals because it makes some of them are common, something represents another, but. Popinasset has been around since the forties, at least, and then been started in forty-eight. It's fully done out, most of it's in the floodplain, so it's different than a number of other areas. And I think, you know, goal number one, preserve the character of our communities best we can while improving resilience. Probably get this a lot, like, most of the, I think we all want to preserve our character. We have an overlay district, so we have setbacks, there's a lot within those setbacks, people can make their house bigger. So we're not trying to say that we'll take your development, your right to building, you know, your house. But we do, we are trying to improve resilience and maintain character. I think Form Based, the Form Based Code ideas are something we'd love to talk about because it sounds, it sounds pretty creative. It sounds like the kind of thing that might work good with all of Popinasset, so we're all for, for trying to.
I love Cape Cod aquatics, so.
Yeah, no, I think, you know, there's a lot of talk about land subject to coastal storm flow, which we want the town to wait till the P E process plays out. There's hundreds and hundreds of people involved in this, the P E P, over eight hundred comments from people. As part of their process, they have a five-month window where people could submit comments. We've put out tremendous amount of good work done. I happen to be one of the few people who are now probably actually read all hundred-plus redline pages of the regulation that they put out. But it's extremely well thought out, it's hard to parrot them. And I think we're really strong advocates for taking advantage of the learnings that come out of that P E process. We are looking for flexibility, but we want to clearly define what can and can't be done and outside of the floodplain for raisin replace as well as additions. There's lots of talk about raisin replace, but we think it's important to also talk about those additions. We should be talking about that. A lot of people in Popinasset want to do additions. They don't have the money to do raisin replace. We don't want to encourage them to tear everything down and make, you know, build mansions. We want to let them, you know, have an addition. My sister has a six hundred and twenty-four square cottage, she wants a bedroom. Like, you gotta, she doesn't want stairs, she hates capacity, she doesn't want to go upstairs. Like, there's so many different situations as people age and place, so we're looking for rules that really fit, that accommodate some of that. We want to see rules that provide incentives for folks to move out or minimize the presence in the floodplain. Let's make it easy for people to improve the situation on the lot. We want provisions so folks know what can and can't be done as a right, person needing waivers, triggering, you know, Z B A approvals or what have you. We'd like to provide guidance for folks to minimize potential environmental contamination in event of an emergency storm. Right now, a lot of the regulations proposed are, I'm telling you, it's what we can't do. It don't actually help with all the stuff that people's basements. Like, we're not solving some of the problems that we really want to solve. So when the hundred-year storm comes, if you look it up in Florida, there's all sorts of contamination. All sorts of nasty stuff flowing around, but none of that's getting talked about or something. So we want to make sure we're actually solving the problems. I think number six, going back up, certainly providing those provisions to make reasonable modifications for, so people can retire, there's a cost to parlay on it. I'm sixty-five, I just turned sixty-five, I have dozens of friends who are late, early sixties, mid-sixties, who are all under retire. They're like, what do we do? People, I think we need to help people stay in their house. You know, a couple of people have said, well, tough, they can just move. They've been here since the forties, fifties, why do they have to move? Why can't we work together and help us on those people's stuff? We want to, we do like the idea of transition, moving away from the previous strategy. Bob touched on that. We think that's a no-brainer for raisin replace and major renovations. Again, part of a resiliency strategy, which makes lots of sense. Number nine, I think it's really important to us, when we all supported the sewer plant, we were told that there was going to be a line that comes down Waving Place Road. The interesting thing, I guess, that we've kind of drilled down on, understand a little better, is just ninety percent of Popinasset's waste goes into the anti-cent. Only ten percent actually flows from Popinasset Bay, so as we talked about, we're trying to improve Popinasset Bay. We had a line in phase three that was going to come down Waving Place. And I was told recently, oh, it's probably not there anymore, so why not? Phase three stewered a lot of New Seabury, a lot of those properties, when the waste was going into Popinasset Bay. So we want to see, we want to be included in phase three for multiple reasons. We wanted to solve the problem of the ten percent. But we have a community that's really excited about trying to fix this problem and is willing to, as Bob said, spend money to help do it. So if we can get a line, we get the line Waving Place, we want to work with the town, we want to work with the sewer proposal. Can we get urine collection systems that feed into that line? Can we get other people's sewer? Can we get some of it to New Seabury? But we're willing to spend money to help solve this problem. We hate the water issue as much as anybody. We want to solve it, but we don't want to tell everybody, you can't do anything in your house, that's not going to be solved. We want to solve it. We'd like to see that line, I know, lines, we talked about this a little bit, we'd love to see that line. We want help from the planning board, potentially. Because it has a huge impact on the plan, planning and the plans for Popinasset and New Seabury. But let's clean out the water, let's get phase three done, let's, we'd like to help with that. Those are our goals.
Yep, so I'm gonna take them up a little, that's a step for higher. Drill down a little bit, step higher. We want, want to hear it, preserve community character. Be able to age and place safely and be able to retire here comfortably. Want predictability, possible avenue for by right redevelopment. Clean water, right? That involves a lot of the stuff that you have, you have here. A mechanism for safe retreat, right? And that might fall under the next one, increase the resilience of the community. You're gonna find there's gonna be a lot of things for each of these, you know, but that, I, I'm hoping that kind of captures that. Any other goal that is kind of?
Can we, our general secretary answered our question, I'd like to hear, you brought in a question and you said you had the answer to it, Karen, about the bedrooms and.
Yes, so bedrooms unretired, which is a state guideline, are based, let me get back. So when you go to the Board of Health and you want to do a raisin replace, or you want to add on to count, whatever you may want to do, one of the things they do is a bedroom count. They'll send someone out, they'll look at your house, and they do a bedroom count, not a bathroom count. Bedroom count is what is a leach field is based on. It's a hundred and ten gallons per bedroom, per day. That's how you size a leach field. So you could technically have, would never happen, a hundred bathrooms in a house. And you have two bedrooms. And if in fact you're only allowed one bedroom, you wouldn't be compliant because of the second bedroom. Now, in the town, in the state of Massachusetts, to meet the requirement of bedroom, it needs to be private. So what happens when they do the inspection of Board of Health? If in fact an opening between that bedroom and a common hallway is six feet or larger, then that bedroom would not be considered a bedroom. It would be considered a space. So what happens a lot is when you see in front of the Z B A, someone comes in with a plan and the Board of Health says it is, can only have a two-bedroom house in this lot. And you see somebody on the board looking at it, oh, but this doesn't have a six-foot open, it only has a four-foot, or it has a wall there, which makes it a three-bedroom house. So the question goes back to the Board of Health. But when you were stating that the Board of Health answers questions and/or Conservation answers questions, people on the Z B A, I'm on the Seabury, okay? People on this, yes, people on the zoning board appeals have the same level of intelligence for reference to zoning, et cetera, et cetera, as anyone else in this room. We are giving our time and our efforts, right? And so we have to rely on Conservation and Board of Health. So when the Board of Health says, Zach was the Board of Health agent, says, I'm okay with this plan. It meets all state, federal, whatever guidelines, local, state guidelines, I guess a better way to put it. We have to rely on that because that's his expertise. Same thing with Conservation. Conservation says, we've improved this under the Conservation bylaw of this town and the state act. We have to rely on that. Yes, can we alter from that to a certain degree? Yes, but we still rely on it. So to answer your question, if it's based on bedroom count, not bathroom count.
By the end, the septic system and where that stuff that the septic system is gonna go is not dependent on two bedrooms, it's dependent on bathrooms. And that's what's gonna pull them apart.
Well, no, so what happens is the Board of Health of the state says, you can have twenty bedrooms, okay? You can have twenty bathrooms, but you know what? The people that are sleeping there, staying is what actually controls the use of what's going into that room. So that being said, it's a hundred and ten gallons per day.
I have to share a little anecdote with you. You know, I work for the Town of Yarmouth, I'm not representing the Town of Yarmouth right now. But they have started, because they're shoring the town, they have started when they go and inspect a rental unit to cap occupancy based on the size of the septic system.
Of the septic?
Of the septic system. So, and that includes short-term rentals. And it's quite a ruh-aha. So there is some communities that are kind of trying to grapple, because I get what you're saying and I get what you're saying, right?
Right, but those, like, in those cases, so they have these big open spaces and they don't count as a bedroom, but that doesn't mean people aren't sleeping in them.
Oh, I mean, I'm seeing it with the ride as well.
So, so I, I think that one thing that we could do is kind of find out what other communities are, how they grapple with this because Yarmouth has made a local decision.
You gotta remember, so all the Z B A is looking at a plan that shows a six-foot opener. They're not looking at, hey, that's gonna be a bedroom. And the other department looked at two bedrooms. A lot of people, after they move in, and next year they put a wall up through the door.
Remember we tried, remember we tried to get a bylaw to regulate, inspect and register rental units? Remember that went down in flames at Town Meeting? Oh, maybe we can look at that again.
So, I'm Chris Conkey, I'm from Popinasset, I have Bright Cove. I thought there were, and I think John already worked on, I thought there are, there's already a plan in place to address the existing water issue through requirements around septic as well as sewer. So are we trying to address an increase in people's size of their homes by attacking the water?
The Board of Health just came out with a new regulation about a month or two ago, and it increased, if you're within three hundred feet of a water body, and you'd have to look and see what that definition is. And you do anything substantial in your house, you have to do anything else.
Right, so which is what we have at our house. So is that, if we're attacking it in that way and we have something specific addressing the water hunnids, which we are all concerned about, is that not separate from how many bedrooms I have?
And I may be incorrect, it may have gone to a thousand.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Not the sewer issue, but I can answer this a little more.
The common sewer entry phase two will take out about forty percent of the nitrogen that you provided to.
From Popinasset?
From Popinasset, that takes nothing out of the port, they're gonna take forty percent. So there's another sixty percent load that has to come out, that there are no sewer plants and there are no way to get there. And the issue to come to there with that four-bedroom, five-bedroom, I get it, it's a six-foot door, it's not a bedroom. But you have a structure that's now putting out two, three, four times as much wastewater at a time to travel. You have them fifty feet from Popinasset Creek, up and down Bright Cove and Southern Sea. And so you have nitrogen traveling three to four feet a day. So as you increase the intensity of use of those houses, you're putting more nitrogen in. So as you increase the intensity of use of those houses, you're putting more nitrogen in, which means the town naturally, instead of sewer-ing four thousand ounces, will have to sewer five thousand ounces. They'll have to make up for that.
I believe that a trigger mechanism, and I don't know what the mechanism may be in raise and replace, should require the access, period.
Yeah.
Period. And so what, where is that trigger mechanism? Is if you do, you know, if you leave your footwork. I don't know what that is, but I'm a firm believer. When someone comes in front of the ZBA, I would love to be able to say, raise or replace the...
Unless you're in the pines, where there doesn't do anything.
No.
We'll go down this path.
I get it, but I'm just saying.
Those, those systems, they only take, I heard like eighty percent of the nitrogen out.
Well, I just worked them last week for a fast system, right? It's supposedly at, I think they're twenty or thirty parts, two million nitrogen. A treatment plant's down to like two or three, I think now, or four. So yeah, they're nowhere near treatment. I wish the whole town's on sewer. That's the way it goes, but twenty and a half.
Title V's take over the same thing.
Well, no, Title V's far exceeds the twenty or thirty, five to eight, I believe. But I mean, the fast, the D nights, the AI systems are certainly much better for the environment, much better.
So Bob's been very patient and he said, so I'm, I'm a little chatter behind him. And once that stops. Okay, Bob, go ahead.
Yeah, so the demarges issue, which I think is relevant for us, the kind of is the intersection of some state requirements and local requirements. It's the, it's the, it's the number of bedrooms that governs, not the size of the house. And you're dealing with a lot coverage ratio, as long as you're meeting the lot coverage ratio, the size of the house can get bigger. I walked the other night, there were eighteen cars parked on a small house that probably is two, maybe three bathrooms. So someone is doing a short-term rental. I'm thinking, one and a half, two people per car, probably thirty kids staying in that house. And it's really, you know, you can get into things talking about lot coverage ratios. You can, I don't want to get too, too meaty. You can talk about floor area ratios, which governs how large a house can be based on the size of the house and some other factors. No matter, however big you build that house, that's so many people that are going to jam into the house, right? We don't want McMansions and poppet asset either. The challenge I face is when I talk to someone and they start talking about their own house, they want all the bells and whistles. No, but I also don't want, go, go in the parents' room. Maybe we can list out the issues and then sort of come back and start to talk about drafting. From a drafting perspective, and just in my former life, I was a real estate lawyer, a town council, and I drafted a lot of zoning bylaws. You want to beware the law of unintended consequences. That all of a sudden you're trying to do a lot of good and you do something that isn't necessarily good. And my prime goal, in addition to trying to get people out of the weapons of proven water quality, is to let my elderly, my older residents do smaller additions on their home. And if you put them in a situation where they wind up saying, I can't afford to do that. I've got to sell the house. They're going to sell it to somebody who's wealthy enough to challenge these rules, win once in a while and go really, really big. And then there is a McMansion in our backyard. We know in our community, the ones that we look at them and say, how did that house get that big? I don't understand. It's cantilevered, you know? It's got, it's got buckels on the second floor. It's got three different decks jumping off in these different directions. We don't want that. I mean, we've heard a lot and clear from the higher chips that we don't want McMansions. But I want to make sure we do have a pathway for people to age in place and do a smaller addition on their home. And maybe we take all these ideas and synthesize them and then do some drafting based off of that that hopefully accomplishes all these goals. But that's kind of how you're dealing with McMansions is it's just saying, we're limiting the number of bedrooms. We're not limiting necessarily the size of the house. And then someone goes, it's got five bathrooms in there. And we all know they're sleeping in the house, right? I mean...
Also, there's an issue with current rate of replacement. That's what it encourages. Current rate of replacement does not encourage you to put addition on your house. It encourages you to sell your mansion back to the amount of money possible so that a builder can come in and put in nine thousand, four thousand dollars there, because he can. There's, there's no problem with older people not being able to put addition on their house. That's, that's not happening, right? What's happening, which is wrong, you see all the time, is people buy their plots, they tear it down, they build up a new house, it impacts the neighbors, it impacts the drainage, it impacts the waters, so...
Well, I don't, I don't believe I agree with you a hundred percent on that. And also, when we get to floodplain issues, that in particular is really going to cause problems unless we figure out a way, if someone's home is partially in a floodplain and partial out, we get them to put a roof outside of the floodplain.
But there's a fine line, here's what really concerns me about the conversation we're having. There's a fine line between raise and replace and putting an addition on your home, right? Meaning, it was discussed earlier that, oh, they have to leave that one wall, okay? I don't know how many have been in Charleston, but this beautiful seventy, whatever, there's a wall sitting there, regular waterfront, and it's, you know what? Why is there? Because the rest is a parking lot, because they tore the whole building down. One wall sitting there. My point is this, if raise and replace is substantially changed to the degree that people are not utilizing it, and then applicants come in to my board and other boards on a different basis, which is pre-existing non-conforming uses. And I've said this to you, I have an attorney who says to me more than once, if you have a pre-existing non-conforming use, you can create new non-conformities. If that's the case, and this is a very, very knowledgeable attorney, Michael Browski, okay? He's got the Green Book in both, in his office.
So are you representing your neighborhood yourself or the ZBA?
I'm representing myself, as a member of this community. I'm not representing the ZBA here at all, at all, period.
You're starting to, you can see we're starting to migrate into that area, okay?
Well, no, he brought up, he says, I'm seeing, I'm saying to you, and I've said this to many people in this town, if you take raise and replace to a point where people, it doesn't motivate people to use raise and replace, then those people are going to go a different direction. I'll tell you the direction, very simple. Under state statute, I have a pre-existing non-conforming use. I'm going to expand that use, that is pre-existing non-conforming, and I'm going to create a new non-conforming, and I'm going to leave out that one wall. There was major changes in New Seabury, Poppet Asset and other sections of this town long before raise and replace. And I can tell you, there were substantial changes. Big buildings, big houses, big buildings. You've got to be very careful. Don't wish for something that you wish you didn't get with the end of that because if you really change this in a, to the detriment where people are not utilizing it to make those changes to their houses, tearing them down, changing them, and I understand some of the concerns of people in this room. I do, I get it. But be careful. I don't know how many attorneys want in front of the board.
Thank you. We will absolutely be...
Well, I'm telling you because I, if you tear it down, if you take raise and replace, and it was instituted for some protection.
And we're going to be, we're going to be, you know, meeting with the ZBA.
I get it. One of the protections built into raise and replace was no new non-conformities. Reason why that was put into place is because, as I just said, there will be attorneys that will argue, and they've said it to me one of them once, if you have a pre-existing non-conforming use, you could, you could increase and add a new non-conformity.
That'll be, I think that's something worth discussing. I mean, my understanding of the zoning amendments, when your building is supposed to become mortgage-free, surprising to me.
I have some case law on point.
That'll even get worse.
I have some case law on point. Somebody had a pre-existing non-conformity and they've decreased that and they've gone to a new non-conformity.
But our bylaw, our bylaw can fix that. Whether, regardless of what the, the, the case law is. Case law comes in when there's a dispute and, and a vacuum of power, of clarity. We can deal with that with the zoning bylaws. And I think that, I, I am very concerned about non-conformities. I, I mean, I don't live in a neighborhood that has any. The neighborhoods that I go through that don't have any, I'm sorry, I like a little bit better. Hope you understand.
No, no, no one, including me, is against rebuilding your house in poppet asset or Pirates Cove or Jones Pond or anywhere. I think everyone wants raise and replace to work for the community. The issue is if you live next to one of these things, as many of us do, we have family who live next to them, you know, you're four feet from somebody else and they go up there and...
So were you four feet, was that house four feet before it was raised and replaced?
Yep. I was one story odd.
I get it, I get it. Under state statute, you have a right to do that, not local bylaw. That's my point. It's states that you can do that.
Well, we're a home rule.
I get it, but I'm just telling you.
And we can, we, I mean, there, there are times when we've made, you know, buildings be twenty feet apart from each other.
I've asked the following question, like Michael Browski. Do we, if, if the ZBA, would the ZBA have a right to say, we're not issuing any more variances? If bylaw came into effect and this committee says no more variances?
Well, you know what? We have a new town council, so we're going to work with them on this.
I get it.
And that's a really good question to ask.
I think there's a lot of questions to be asked in the town of Yarmouth.
I think you should know.
It's going off the rails.
I think there's a really important component of regulatory discussion as it pertains to raise and replace for the Board of Appeals and Jermaine, your question about the Board of Health. Single-family homes are specifically exempted in the zoning act from having regulatory agencies like the Board of Appeals regulate the interior use of that building. So that's why they need to look to the Board of Health as it pertains to the bedrooms because they don't have an interior station of the bedrooms, none. And so when we're talking about raise and replace, we're talking about dimensional non-conformities within the bylaw. So we're talking about setbacks, building height and lot coverage, and that's pretty much it.
That's it. Right, but if you have, if you come, if you have a pre-existing non-conformity, you're now, you're allowed to extend that pre-existing non-conformity through raise and replace.
Subbing to a finding, subbing to a ZBA saying it's disapproved.
Wait, wait, let Evan, you're jumping in. Let Evan answer that question.
So yes, the current bylaw requires the Board of, well, requires the applicant to essentially present a plan that identifies the existing non-conforming nature of the property and may propose continuing, expanding or altering that non-conformity. The Board of Appeals has, can evaluate that proposal and say yes or no. If yes, it must be found to, quote unquote, not be more substantially detrimental to the name of the things that previously. So that's really, that brings us to where we're at now.
But even lot coverage is a pre-existing non-conformity.
In many cases, but not in all cases.
If you're trying to land subject coastal storm flow, makes a demonstration and alternative. Here's lot covered at a hundred percent, here's the house.
Yes, understood.
So now the house is bigger than the lot coverage that should be allowed.
So that really is the critical issue that brought us to this discussion. Mostly around the two-twenty-eight waiting place road decision. Because lot coverage, you know, a little history piece, because I've looked at the zoning histories best I could subsequent to two-twenty-eight waiting place road decision, like right around the same time that the poppet asset overlay district was created, which was, I think, in nineteen ninety-two. Was that right?
Around that, I think.
In the early nineties. So the poppet asset overlay district has minimum lot sizes of sixty-five hundred feet, square feet? Is that right?
Seventy-five square feet.
Six thousand, seven-five feet frontage, twenty-five feet front, fifteen sides rear. And so, and lot cover just twenty-five percent. The vast majority of poppet asset is in the floodplain. And so the, I think, based on the history of when these amendments to the bylaw were added, poppet asset overlay district and the footnote in the land space requirements table that articulates that land subject coastal storm flow and other coastal wetlands need be removed from the lot area calculation, happened at the same time, which means the town couldn't have intended to have land subject coastal storm flow not be considered in lot area because it would have negated the poppet asset overlay district in its totality. You would have not, you created an overlay district to allow something, but you made them all non-conforming. So it couldn't have been intended to be that way, but it is that way. We know that through case law, which, which, which is what brings us here. So the proposal I last presented with the planning board included language that was unique for your city. It's not just poppet asset, it was all floodplain properties and it, and, and two separate standards. The more restrictive standard was no increases in lot coverage. And I think it used no structural expansion. Mostly because it gets complicated to talk about the lot coverage issue when you can't calculate the lot coverage. You cannot divide by zero. I think it's very awkward when we have, when, when plans are presented to your board, it gets weird because you can't do the math, it's impossible.
But we've had this conversation. There is a way that I think you can do it.
And so we, and we, and we've worked that out, but you need, obviously you need to identify the non-conformity and the board needs to evaluate whether or not the alteration of the non-conformity is, is, is or is not substantially more detrimental. But we proposed a bylaw that says any increase is more detrimental and would require that. And we've also proposed this, if you have a non-conforming side setback, you can maintain that setback, but you could expand vertically within that side setback area. That's what's on the table. So I just want to bring us back to...
Evan, would you, can or cannot expand vertically?
You, so, correct. So if you were at four feet from your property line, for example, you can maintain a first floor, but you would need to bring your second floor starting at the side setback mark. So your second story would be fifteen feet from your property line.
Yep.
That's what's on the table now.
Quick question. Has the planning board or yourself, all of you, considered taking floodplain out of your lot coverage calculation? It just happened.
The, and the draft, and I think before you is what I titled, raise and replace round three. Round two did create an exclusion of land subject coastal storm flow solely for the purposes of being able to calculate it and show it appropriately on the plan.
As intended.
And to be consistent with the purpose and intent, I think, of the original bylaw rules. When I presented that to the board, the board didn't want to go in that direction. And then we have round three.
Can you, can you explain that question and answer a little bit more? Say that again? I want to understand this piece.
The question is, why, or did the board consider removing the inclusion of the floodplain in the definition of lot coverage? Considering the floodplain a wetland and you can, and you can calculate. Whereas earlier, a floodplain was not considered a wetland under normal calculations.
I did propose a draft that suggested try and rectify that conflict, inherent conflict with land subject coastal storm flow and lot coverage calculations, mainly for the purposes of making it easier for the Board of Appeals to review plans. But the current draft does not include such an exclusion. It would, prior that the board still established the finding, the, the non-conforming nature of the lot coverage. And so when you're making the finding though, it's like, you know, what is the lot coverage? And if you don't have lot area, zero, or you can't divide it, you can't have the lot coverage. So it's hard for the board.
It's moot.
It's just weird.
It's moot.
So there's a good example where poppet asset thinks that you should go back to the language of two and say that if you can put the house within, and meet all the setbacks and meet the coverage ratio that includes the land subject coastal storm flow, that's something really fair to us.
So I think...
Say that, say that. I'm so sorry, so, so I feel like I've been in meetings since eight o'clock yesterday morning. No, I, I, can you just repeat that again?
Can I provide an example?
I don't think that's...
So, so you said earlier, your, your sister has a six-hundred, seven-hundred square foot cottage. In poppet asset, I don't know the lot size, but you know, maybe that's exclusive of land subject coastal storm flow. Ten percent lot coverage or fifteen percent lot coverage. Twenty-five percent is the, is the maximum lot coverage. So under the currently proposed bylaw, she could have no additional expansion of that structure because she has a lot of her non-conformity and we can't expand it.
Okay.
So in draft two, I tried to create an exclusion for that to allow the property owner in that case to be at twenty-five percent exclusive, exclusive of land subject coastal storm flow.
Okay, I kind of remember that, okay.
Okay, so that, that was what was proposed. Under the current bylaw, a very small cottage in the floodplain would not be able to make the, any modest improvement.
You mean this rate?
Correct.
Okay.
The zoning board of appeals have dealt with this issue. We've came up with a process so that we can manage it.
Are you seeking for the ZBA or for your neighborhood?
I'm speaking for you.
I'm not, I'm not ready to, I'm not ready to, to incorporate the history of the ZBA right now. I, I, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Because that's, thank you. All right, because I want, because it's, this is letting board-based, so... So Evan, can you bring us through what you have here?
Sure.
You don't have to leave, but I am going to focus in on the planning board.
Okay.
I don't want to ask any zoning questions.
Who was it?
It's Ron Bondi.
He's the chair of the ZBA.
Ron Bondi, he's the chair of the ZBA.
Okay, so...
I guess he's the chair.
Go ahead, sure. So the bylaw proposal, as it's currently been proposed to the board and is before you now, tries to accomplish a few different things. One, establish a clear purpose of intention of the bylaw. What are you trying to achieve by way of allowing you to raise your place to homes? The current bylaw is silent on that issue. It contains some general requirements, but then more specifically dives into trying to provide that definition of what would or may, what conditions for reconstruction would constitute substantial detrimental. And so one thing, this draft before you does have that two pathways. If you're floodplain, you go left, if you're non-floodplain, you go right. If you're non-floodplain, this draft essentially mirrors the... If you're non-floodplain, this draft essentially mirrors the existing conditions of the Board of Appeal process, which is, you know, if you have a non-conformity, you can maintain it and alter that non-conformity, if you can't, increase the non-conformity or make new non-conformities. It's more or less expanding on the existing condition, providing language for it. Much of the feedback we've received today is, you know, why would we have, why would we have a fork in the road? And so I think that's a tough, that seems to be a place where there's some consensus. Let's not have a fork in the road increase standards that work for all properties in town, irregardless of whether or not the site is flooded. The primary difference with what this draft tries to articulate for floodplain properties is that, you know, there are, the floodplain is a resource area that should be protected in some way. And it seeks to do this by doing two, primarily two things for people of character, lot coverage issues, and it is that if you're in the floodplain, you can't expand your structure. You can grow vertically and that's your growth potential. If you have any existing side yard setback non-conformities, you could maintain them, but you can't expand them because you're limited to the existing coverage on the lot. That is what's proposed for the floodplain now. While outside of the floodplain, you could expand your lot coverage up into the minimum or the maximum allowed of the district. So if you're at 18, you could go to 20, and that's, that's the difference. Also for, this is really specific to Papaneset, but I think I'm starting to understand more how this would benefit all of the older subdivisions with smaller lots, or, you know, talking about the ponds, certainly, you know, San Antonio Pond, Johns Pond, et cetera. It's, it's about that, the, the vertical expansion of side yard setback non-conformities. I think that's like one thing that is so obvious in certain cases where, I think Len you just said, you know, you're four feet from the property line, the house has always been there, but once, you know, a 30-foot tall structure is going right next to you, that really creates problems for people. And so we seek to resolve the potential for that situation by only allowing vertical expansion inside our setback non-conformity, or not allowing vertical expansion within that non-conforming setback area and only allowing vertical expansion where the side yard setback line begins. So you might have a single story and then your house will be in that 15-foot line. That's what's currently proposed.
Go right ahead. You probably just do that.
A couple of questions and suggestions. So setbacks, we made our position clear on setbacks. Does ZBA currently can grant variances for setbacks here?
I think, I think Ron just said the word variance, but didn't mean variance. So they, they, obviously, any property may be entitled to a variance, but as it pertains to race replacement, they need to establish findings pertaining to those existing non-conformities.
Taking that setback, so let's say it's not, but it's not a race to replace, and someone's going to put in addition, they can get variance for putting in a setback.
To specify.
I mean, so. Yes, but only if certain statutory requirements are meant, it is shape, topography, or soil conditions you need.
Correct, correct. Those specific findings have to be made.
Yes.
I'm, I'm not a big fan of like variances to setbacks anyways, because.
There's a fair amount of frivolous variances here.
Most critical things that neighbors need. But I just wanted to sort of get that point out, because I think that we said in our community, we're okay with respecting the setbacks.
Yeah.
I think that makes a ton of sense. But again, we talked about, you jump around, we talked about the floodplain, if you can get the house out of the floodplain, you shouldn't mathematically have some formula that all of a sudden you're stuck, you can't expand it, you can't change it. The encouragement should be get it out of the floodplain, I think. And I'm, I'm still trying to deal in my head with Marge's issue and the tripwires with the state and not going past some of the things the state does with bedrooms. But a lot of times, and I, I don't have anything with me because all my stuff is back at home, you require specific findings of the ZBA when they're granting or the Planning Board actually granting a special permit. And I'm wondering whether we could create a layover findings that would help us deal with the McMansion issue. I'm just, I'm noodling that in my head.
Well, not sure.
I'm there yet, but you should be thinking about guidance that says, here's some specific findings we want you to make when you're going to grant it, so like a 228 waiting place road, put your findings out there so that a court can review them.
I mean, there are in our special permit use section of the zoning bylaw, a relatively substantial series of findings that are supposed to be made, and they're often incorporated in the race decisions, but I very seldom see them articulated by board members during deliberation. And I mean this zoning board.
But do they apply the race replacement?
Say to us.
As a special permit, you're saying they apply the race replacement?
They would certainly apply the race replacement.
And maybe you should put some language into, into this, specifically addresses that, and we can, I'm trying to think of a way to have it address the McMansion issue as well, without.
It's, it's, it's a procedural requirement now. And that procedural requirement should be rectified in a deliberation.
Whether it's cross-referenced here, some would take some reference back.
Water quality, traffic flow, traffic safety, public safety, adjacent properties, really covers the gamut.
Other regulations.
Other, other.
Other town regulations.
For a special permit.
For a special permit. And that's any special permit use.
If you're going to amend this, put a specific reference in, and those findings need to be made and incorporated into a race decision, and you're going to get better decisions.
I, I agree, but I don't have a right to.
No, I can take stab at it.
Yeah, and, and the other thing is, I thought something about the variances, like, it's like you can't put in your zoning bylaw that.
You can't prevent a variance if the criteria applies to your lot. You can't say no variances can be issued for this use, it's not lawful.
So even though some, there, there are people that ask for variances and they convince the special permit granting authority to grant that variance, right? And you have to go to court to kind of straighten that out, but there's, there's.
But there's a big, large change that you.
I'd, I'd like to.
Would you be able to create use variances?
No, so we, use variances are specifically a home rule in that you, your bylaw has to articulate the ability to issue a use variance. Mathematically, it does not allow use variances.
Yeah, but there you go, that's what I was getting towards.
Yeah, no, what I, what I meant was that, like, I think Sandwich, for example, when they were going through their ADU bylaw, said no variances for ADUs will be issued. But if you're, if a unique shape, lot, lot shape or soil condition that doesn't allow you to do something that everyone else gets to do, you're entitled to the variance.
You're entitled to the variance, but if you convince the special.
Variance is supposed to be rare.
Yes, of course.
Rarely granted, and only if you meet those, I've got classes on this stuff.
Of course.
Right.
I'm dreaming of my slides. Only if you meet those specific requirements and you prove that hardship, which is supposed to be very hard to do.
Of course.
That's why it's called hardship.
Easy, easy to overcome, though, in court.
Of the way around. It's easy, it's easy to get from a special permit granting authority, but when you go to court, you lose.
No, generally, a board that raises a variance. I'm sorry.
When you appeal a ZBA's approval of a variance, isn't that very easy to overcome? Summer judgment briefs?
Well, yes, but all I'm trying to articulate, all I'm trying to articulate.
Only if it was a bad decision to start with.
All that I'm trying to articulate relating to variances is that you can't put in your zoning bylaw, no variances will be issued for this.
Correct, that's it.
That's all I'm trying to say.
Yeah.
Because if you're entitled one, you have to establish that you are entitled.
So does everybody understand the term by right? Special permit and variance? Everybody comfortable with those terms? Because if you're not, we have our planner who can explain them. If you're good, okay. So, so this we need to carefully look at.
Did pretty good.
But I, I think from Papaneset's perspective, we were, we were saying, right down the draft said you can't grow your footprint in a floodplain. I don't agree with that. We think there needs to be ways of doing that.
And Bob, you're saying, but you still mean grow, but within the setbacks.
Oh, of course.
Yeah, she just, they think lot, lot coverage and all that, yeah.
That was the first thing you brought up, was setback. You wanted to keep them.
So you mean they're related, they're structured.
I don't even know.
And that's your point, I think Bob was trying to make encourage people to move out of the floodplain by utilizing that flexibility, as you could move back or extend out of the floodplain, or sound sensible if possible.
Yeah, there's a, there's a goofy thing, because if the corner of your house is in the floodplain and the rest of it isn't, your house is in the floodplain. And if the corner of your house is in the velocity zone and the rest isn't even in floodplain, it's still in the velocity zone. So we get goofy decisions and things. That's one of the reasons why you need variance for some of the stuff.
Aren't you saying that we should count, last thing you saw on floodplain land as lot coverage?
I think, I think what we're saying is you should cover, you should count the square footage of the lot in the denominator.
Which includes the floodplain.
But if you can.
Yes.
But if you can, like, encourage people to move back, move out, minimize, you know, their presence in the floodplain.
Detail there by being a job, because I, I know it's down to that issue and it's very pragmatic and you're, you're 50 feet from a wetlands and you want to rebuild the house, and so you're like, oh, maybe I'll move the house closer to the street, get up the hill, and then I'm farther away from the wetlands. So I think it's a, it's good intention. However, sometimes when you don't see what's built there, like take 27-hour chains is a good example, it's like, oh, you didn't, you didn't move away from the wetland, you, you moved away so you could build a huge house at the end of the day. You could have built a house and stayed that far away from the wetlands, but you wanted to get another 15 feet so you can crunch 15 feet to the street. And now on my street, all houses are aligned 25 feet, all houses 20, so I don't want to see one of them. Move out by, to five feet away. But if it's.
By the incentive.
Right, you were saying you could fill up the field.
But that's where you say move around, yeah.
But you're inclined.
That's okay.
Yeah, that's what we're saying.
I agree with that.
So, so can I ask a question? You have mentioned, they previously proposed that you could, you can move 150 feet back, you can calculate the new denominator and still allow for a build with a lot percentage. Why was that? Why, why would we go back and say you have to be more strict with that?
I think there was some perception that creating, any conception in real, I have to think about that a little bit deeper, but that removing land subject coastal storm flow from the lot coverage calculation would be like granting relief to the property owner, removing the existing environmental control that may not be advantageous. The way I look at that issue is that an existing lot coverage non-conformity can be continued extended or altered with the findings we just talked about. So I don't see the, the end product being different than if you were to create that exclusion, the exception. I was just trying to make it easier on the Board of Appeals to articulate the findings. This was really for the regulators, more than anyone else, to articulate the real lot coverage. Because now what they often do on the plans is they'll say like, you know, lot coverage exclu, you know, exclusive land subject coastal storm flow, lot coverage inclusive of it, and then it's like, it's impossible math.
But there's a great new definition called structure coverage.
Well, then this is, it's because, how else can you talk about it? You know, it's like, it's impossible to use words in our planning and zoning language to articulate that issue, which puts the board in a difficult position to make findings or make decisions or conditions in a permit that are defensible. You know, they, it's easy to make mistakes, I think, is my point in that regard.
Right, when you have a math calculation that is basically infinity, you can't defend that.
That's not, that's not a view.
You can't defend it mathematically, scientifically, legally, so.
But that's not a case, right? So if you, you.
No, I don't think so.
Right, so if you, if you have a lot, you go 150 feet back from your wetlands and you reach out to, and you have a, and your coverage is smaller than the current percentage you can add, that's 20 to 25%, you, you lower that denominator and still say your coverage has to be the same, you can't, you still contain.
I think what people's.
How much you can expand.
I think.
You still expand, but you, you actually have restricted the amount of expansion that you could do.
I think like what people's fear is, if I understand it from some conversations I had with community members, is that if you have a small cottage, I'll keep using your sister as an example, and you're totally in the floodplain, you know? You are, and you're not allowed to expand, it's like you're just, you're, you're, you're kind of trapped.
Well, you say you're not allowed to expand, you, you could go up the floor.
Yes, and so this is what, I wanted to get to this next point.
Probably you can't expand.
Correct, you're going vertical. So this brings in a whole building code discussion about FEMA floodplain requirements, too. So many houses in the floodplain will predate current flood standards, and many include basements, many are non-flood compliant, many have their mechanicals in the basement, and simple additions like people may want to do may trigger substantial improvement and need to comply with those standards. So if that's your sister, and she has her mechanicals in the basement, and the mechanicals occupy 150 square feet, and she wants to build a bedroom, well, that bedroom may require her to make the substantial improvement, it may not, but either way, she's bringing those mechanicals upstairs. And so your, your question to me was, could we create, could we compensate for that lost square footage? Could we allow enough lot coverage expansion to accommodate that trade-off, to become flood compliant but maintain the living space?
We want, we want people to get the stuff out.
Eleven?
You can't put it in the kitchen, let's give it a little room to bring it in.
And this, you're talking about a building that has to go up.
No, no, in some cases.
The first floor elevation, like you have all of the mechanicals and stuff in the basement, all that needs to be on the basement.
You could take, you could take that as an example, if you're talking about a 650-square-foot house, and you're saying that all of the mechanicals and utilities have to come out of the basement, and you can only go up. So either they got to put it on the first floor and lose living space on the first floor, or their 650-square-foot addition becomes a very small 500-square-foot addition. We have now picked winners and losers, where somebody has a nice two-story house, somebody has a lousy two-story house. And what I'm saying is, if you give them 100, 100 square feet of extra space somewhere on that lot where they can put the utilities, that encourages them to get those things out of the basement, still giving them the chance for some sort of a liberal addition. And again, I ain't talking about McMansions.
That's a great idea.
That was said one of the meetings, I was, I think Paul Thurston said, that the way the food's made of the building now is his hot water heaters go right up in the bathroom, just a little gas fire.
But it's still, but when they're existing, it's not. And, and you tell somebody to go up, I need to convert staircase on both levels, then they go, it's a filter, and that little provided is just really small. Structurally, you can't fill up.
I, I lost my closet to my house, because I'm in a flood zone, can I have a water heater? Can I wash a dryer? I would have had a basement downstairs, you know? So I lost, you know, rather than that, my board lost.
Mary, with the board, tell us what is so long, above developing, an addition in the floodplain, not the velocity zones, not the transitional zones, and get all that.
Floodplains are a very important resource for our earth, okay? They're very important for the protection of, of, of this community. People have built in floodplains, our floodplain expanded, right? These floodplains, they clean our water and they protect us from storms. So when we talked about building resiliency, right, we're going to learn a lot about that in that chapter when we do the LCP, right? How do you build resiliency? Well, you go down to Miami and they're just raising all the, all the roads and the, and the bridges, and they're, and they're taking their mechanicals out of these sky-rise buildings and they're putting them on the second floor with breakaways on the first floor. They're just expecting that the water is just going to come in and retreat. So we're very different up here, we're a peninsula of sands jetting out 65 feet into the Atlantic Ocean, right? So if, if this was all happening today and somebody said, oh, can I build in this area? People would say, no way, that, that resource is too important. So some people, like our leaders, our environmental leaders at the state level, don't want to see anything, any increase of any structures in that floodplain, because they're so important to our water quality, resiliency, and protection from, from storms. That's why. Why would this board, what, what's the thermostat on this board? I think that we have been, you know, very, we're very supportive of protecting the floodplain. Do we want to make it so that people who have property rights don't ever get to use their property? No, no. We're, we're concerned that as, well, I don't even want to say it out loud, I don't want to, I don't even want to say it out loud, we're, you know, it's, it's like if a road gets swept away, keeps getting swept away, do we all have to keep contributing? do we all have to keep contributing to the public resources to rebuild it, right? So we just, we did something, you know, Redbrook Road, we just fixed that, right? To increase the drainage. But like there are roads that are along the coast that keep getting damaged, not in our community, but other communities.
I agree with that.
You know what I mean? I, I don't, I don't think it's up to us, we can lead the town, we think it should be, but it's ultimately, you know, the town meeting needs to, needs to approve it. And that's why we're here, is. How about we take this document of yours, Mary?
Yeah.
If you mind, and just go over, because the first category, first group is about properties located out of the floodplain zone, overlay district, enter the poppy overlay district. So this would be where, like say, people live on John's Pond, for example. Like the first one is very understandable, if your side setback is not, is not conforming, it's you're at eight feet, it's supposed to be fifteen feet, you know you can't go any further than eight feet. You also know you can't go up at eight feet, as was said previously. You have to go back to fifteen feet and then you can build up two and a half. But I want to ask Evan the question that I asked somebody the other day and I didn't really get it. If you can build up two and a half stories at the fifteen-foot level, do you still have to say, is this detrimental to the neighborhood? Because I'm on a hill and I'm building a two-and-a-half story house and it's overlooking, you know, this poor guy who's lost his sky? The answer is no, you're shaking your head, architectural committee.
Well, there's all you can hear.
No, I, I think that you do.
That's the way that.
You do?
You're literally altering the phrase.
A layer, a layer.
Yeah, but you still have to go to, to.
You're allowed to alter, you know, on paper it says you are allowed to alter at fifteen feet, move to a half stories. The question is, are you creating a detriment to the neighborhood, more substantially more detrimental?
Well, I think what this bylaw is trying to articulate is that if you remain within height limitations established in the bylaw, that is not more detrimental.
Okay.
It defines it.
Okay, so if you take away sky to the next door neighbor, that's just the rub, right?
That's it.
As long as you need. Right, but you're in the velocity zone.
No, I'm not talking about velocity.
She's out of the velocity.
No, I'm not just talking about, I'm talking now outside the floodplain. Do you all agree with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so if somebody is next door and loses some sky, that's just.
As long as it stays within the.
Okay.
Bylaws, stays within the high bylaw.
So this is, this is one A and one B.
Yeah. So let's go down the list and see what.
This is this that has the big gray hat on.
Mary, go ahead.
No, I'm gonna let you.
Okay, um.
Are we on the next page?
I, I just changed the language just because sometimes, you know, you read it and you're not sure what it's saying. Tell me, Bob, if this is the way you understand B. If your house is twenty feet from the sideline, sideline, which is fifteen feet, you can build on a fifteen-foot, okay, this, I answered this question. A and B have been answered, because you can build up two and a half stories at the fifteen-foot sideline.
Are we going to have a floodplain or not a floodplain?
We're talking about the first category, outside the floodplain zone.
No.
So we've answered those questions.
This says for all properties, okay, I'm sorry, I sit corrected, I don't stand corrected.
Okay, all right, so that's A.
If this language is intended to mirror more or less the existing condition, but expands, it just provides more language for the board appeals to consider, but it really is an enumeration of the existing condition.
C, if you have pre-existing non-conformity, ZPA may approach replacement structures and then maintain, but do not increase the lot coverage non-conformity. If the pre-existing covers, say, forty percent of the lot coverage, now excluding the wetlands, because that's another issue we have to figure out, excluding the wetlands and floodplain, which is not counting as lot coverage.
So C, this is for both. So C is one of these conditions where I don't think there's an applicable case for the entire town. But I don't believe there are any existing lot coverage non-conformities outside of the floodplain. Meaning, I don't think there's any properties that are twenty-one, twenty-six, twenty-seven percent lot coverage.
Okay.
But I included language about it for the purpose of being thorough. Because I, I can't guarantee that.
Yeah, okay. So the last one is replacement structures may increase the height, their height up to a massive height allowed in the applet zoning district. Well, that's, that's pretty clear too. What, what is the height, is it, is it two and a half in John's Pond?
So it's thirty-five feet, three and a half stories everywhere in Pompanesette.
Thirty feet, and what does that?
It can be two stories.
Help, they're laid out to thirty feet, two and a half?
I'm sorry.
It's thirty feet high max in Poppy and thirty-five elsewhere.
Everywhere.
So is that thirty feet, does that calculate two and a half stories?
So like the two, the stories and the height I see as like a double stopgap measure, like pilings, for example, like. You have area on the floor, but the peak of your roof can't exceed thirty feet. So the structure would never exceed thirty feet.
So we had that issue when we were doing the fill thing, because people were building on fill and then the house goes on top and you measure the fill, you measure the height.
I think what was happening there is they bring in the fill and then measure the height from that new grade.
Yeah.
I think that's the original.
Yeah.
And so that was, that problem was not the regulatory, that was implementation of regulations.
That happened to my neighbor.
The administration of the regulations.
My neighbor, the guy, built a house.
You should show an existing condition plan that identifies your existing elevation. And subsequent to that, what happens is your elevation, because then that would create a metric. But people weren't doing it and the board appeals wasn't super diligent.
And they didn't have to tear down the house.
They tore two feet off the roof.
Five floors or thirty-one?
Uh, they should, if it's approved, yes. One hundred percent is part of the structure. Now, it might not constitute a story, but that's why you have the double, the double stopgap measure. So, yeah, it, like, you have that space. I don't know if it constitutes a story or not, you can never go over thirty feet.
Plus ten, what do you say?
No, you want, you, you could not.
So we have, we have a.
Whatever that decision, I would not have the board, and I didn't write that in the name of the board, but.
Bring it again.
So put into that.
I would say that is a problem.
So I want to go back to, so we're talking about this very interesting, you're going to have to give us a photo, but I want to, I want to hear what, Evan, what were you saying about pilings and height?
So our bylaw contains like two different height measures. One is building height, you know, feet from the, from the average natural grade and then stories. And she was asking a question about, well, what about houses built on pilings, you know, the velocity is wherever. Is that, you know, if there's ten feet of pilings, then your first floor is there, do you get ten, do you get ten more feet? The answer to that question is no, certainly not, it shouldn't be the case. If it has been the case, then it would be a problem.
All right, so your pilings are ten feet, you don't get to go from that point another thirty.
Like, so like, I don't know if the building code considers that space a story or not, but that's the thing, so like.
Oh.
I don't think it is, in my opinion, but you could never exceed thirty feet. You don't get credit because you're out of pilings.
Okay.
Right, but sometimes the structures close, usually enclosed.
They break away walls or something like that, that's, that, these are building code issues.
The first floor has to be fourteen feet, uh, see, see the.
Elevation.
Yeah, elevation has to be fourteen feet, that's move up, so you could, I don't know where they take my idea, I'm on fourteen feet, they still take it from where the loud.
What should be done in any project is you submit an existing condition point that shows your existing topography, your existing elevation.
That's my very beginning.
And that's when, that's how your, your, your existing condition is your baseline, assuming other manipulated passing, it was. But you shouldn't be bringing in fill, you can't do it anymore anyway, but you can't pile up your fill, elevate your lot by three feet and then get three, you know, that three feet on top. That is, I think, a schiacy practice that is not supported by the law.
I know.
I mean, it's.
I know.
You know, I know, you know, builders around have sought to do that, I know some have been substantially grieved by some of these builders. And it's, you know, I, I'd say that the building department's done a pretty good job, but, yeah, that's a problem. And certainly one, like the two-twenty-eight, you look familiar, you're a builder, I feel like, you look very familiar, but I think they're making connection dots right now.
And I, I think, I think that a building, a building department, a building commissioner really is in tune to all of this. There's going to be a point where we're going to sit down and have them review this as well and then make sure that, you know, we're not making a problem for them.
I will say, it was that decision that really triggered a motivation to tackle the raise replacement more substantially. Because there were many procedural issues with the way that decision was rendered. And that was apparent by the judge when he rendered his decision, but that really shows a lot of the necessity.
It's a little bit. It's still important.
Say it again? It was, so it was remanded back, the board established the findings in the direction of the judge and I believe that decision was subsequently, is that correct?
Correct.
So that's still in litigation?
Still waiting for a lead court judge to.
Yes.
So who wants to take us through? It's not the main court, right? It's superior.
It's superior? So that's my interest.
So who wants to take us through the next part? Karen, so this is for properties within the floodplain.
Overly.
Or in Pompanesette.
Or the.
Anywhere in Pompanesette.
Anywhere in Pompanesette.
Okay.
Now, we're talking about the floodplain, overlay district and Pompanesette overlay.
But it could be in or out of the floodplain.
Yep, yeah, I guess.
Well, we're talking about properties in the floodplain, that's.
Or.
You can't go on there.
You're using. Yeah, or Pompanesette.
For a structure in a pre-existing non-conforming, it is, it front, side or rear, one of those things is out of black, right?
Same, okay.
That's not good language, but for a structure in a pre-existing non-conforming, a lot for one, front, side or rear setback, looking for one non-conforming.
Any or all of those.
Any or all, okay, that's good to know. So the property owner can't increase the size of the building footprint in the floodzone overlay and Pompanesette overlay, because it's considered substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
So can I stop you there?
But, but, but there's a but.
You mean the but?
You can adjust the location of the footprint on a lot so long as the total footprint is not larger than what existed previously and is otherwise compliant with the provisions of this bylaw.
So I have a couple of problems with that.
What, what is the problem?
The first one is you put all of Pompanesette, whether it's in the floodplain or not in the floodplain, you made that requirement apply to all of Pompanesette. So if a house is not in the floodplain, unlike any of your neighborhoods, it's in Pompanesette, you've made this requirement apply to it, you've got a problem with that. The second part is, I don't know that as a general rule of thumb, we should be saying, maybe, maybe it's the, we're talking about the size of the footprint, so maybe that's what I should focus on. But going to our issues before with the floodplain, and I don't think Alan ever completed his thought, I don't necessarily agree that leaders in the state, I, you know, I know some guys that have written a lot of these bylaws, they're friends of mine, want no development in the floodplain. I think people realize there are a lot of properties and houses that already exist in the floodplain and they struggle with how to deal with those houses, how to deal with a lot of these issues that we're talking about tonight. And how to, the goal should be to encourage those homeowners on those properties to become more compliant, to meet the goals we talked about earlier, of clean water, of regular panels, of making things more flood compliant they are, so that we're improving the situation. If we say you can't do anything, then you're never going to improve the situation. You just want to do one of two things, you're going to do nothing or you're going to sell your property to someone who's got the money to fight the bylaw change or to fight the special permit decision. And as we've seen with a lot of these cases and a lot of times, when, that's not a result that I want to see. I want to see something that encourages people to make the situation better. And that's going to be better for that person if they're just doing an addition rather than raising and replacing, or if they are raising and replacing, if they can move around a lot in a way that's going to improve the existing condition. They ought to be able to do that. And Alan, I know you've had a point, I just don't want to miss it.
No, to approve, I just want to go to approve the existing condition. I just want to suggest that you, you could add on to your home that's in the floodplain and you need to comply with the building code if it needs to be at the correct elevation for your new addition. You're probably going to trigger the fifty percent rule to encourage to get all utilities out of the cell, which is something everybody wants.
Great.
Great idea. Put your addition on, get your utilities up there, you got an extra bedroom, so it's not just a hundred square feet, it might be three hundred square foot addition, say, on a home, seven hundred square. But it's in the floodplain. So, so what do you lose when you fill in a coastal floodplain? I want to emphasize coastal, not freshwater floodplains. And do you lose flood storage capacity of the ocean? No. No, that little bit of fill is not going to negatively impact the flood storage capacity of the ocean. Is it going to negatively impact water quality? Not likely. The water quality will be the same whether that addition is there or it's not. It's, it's safe, it's built according to code. But what it can do is it can improve resiliency to that storm. And a general example, a couple of houses up here, maybe they dip down, there's a little bit of a channel between the two houses, and I think this happened in Sandy, the hurricanes came in and they get focused in a channelization of storm and then roads, the houses, foundations collapse. You can improve that condition and fill that channel in so it's level and it abuts the storm. It's more resilient, not necessarily with the wall, just natural earth with vegetation and so forth. That is a more resilient solution to a hundred-year storm. And you've allowed filling in a hundred-year floodplain. None of the last examples, that's, that's to him, I wouldn't, I'm not speaking to that. I'm speaking to the hundred-year floodplain.
And then their cars are a problem with them flooding on the street because they put more weight on their piece of property and that kind of brings the water.
It doesn't, the water table and hundred-year flood are different and they're sourced from different, a hundred-year flood comes in quickly, fills up all your galleries.
I don't think, I don't think we'll ever have, I don't think we'll ever have filling in channeling. I don't think that would ever happen, but I wanted, I.
You don't think it won't happen?
You say that there's, there's.
No, because it exists in a channel.
And that channel being filled in, I don't think that, that would ever, ever happen. I think that's beyond the zoning bylaw. But when you talk about these, these additions.
Yes.
Right, in the, in the floodplain, improving the resiliency, besides this filling in a channel, what else, how else, because they're being raised up on pilings or?
Certainly, they could only be, the flood could be, it's only like a foot deep, so it may not require pilings.
Oh, I mean, but you would, I'm sorry, so you would talk about raising it above that fourteen-foot elevation.
But you're also, you're also including it by removing the cannibals, whatever they are.
That's a major, right.
Moving the what?
The cannibals.
Okay.
When you go look at, somebody mentioned earlier, as I have done, you go look at where the stuff you've been in Florida, so much of the trash, garbage, the hanky environmental disaster was all because of stuff that was below. Anything that was built at fourteen feet washed through, it was fine. So my question is, if I sit and listen to a very practical suggestion, where does it fit with the group? Why wouldn't you try to work out something that seems to be practical, good for the homeowner, good for the environment, good for the town? Wouldn't we want to write to modify a bylaw to, to accomplish that? As I said, listen, it doesn't affect us so much, but if I listen, I wonder, it sounds like it makes sense to me.
I think you should define footprint, until, I think, I don't know if you guys know, so your shed is part of your existing footprint and your deck is part of your existing footprint.
And your swimming pool.
And your swimming pool and your entranceway and what, so actually, when you rebuild, you can already expand your cottage, because as big as your deck is, you can make that two-story house.
We're not a pantanal question, okay?
But now you're forcing people to change it.
Hard, hard scape is not footprint. So what, what you see, the way people have their, they take their decks and they take their sheds and then they expand their house and then they hard scape the grounds, if they still have a patio instead of a deck and that's, that's kind of counterproductive.
A lot of people don't have big decks, a lot of people don't have large decks. We're, we're looking for regulation that allows exactly what.
Let's, let's understand this term footprint as we have it, as it's used in Mashpee right now. So what, what, what is, what adds to that footprint calculation?
Well, so any, any structure is applying to the building code, so a patio is not a structure, does not contribute to the whole lot coverage.
But deck is.
But a deck is. But a deck is, a pool is, sheds are, a gazebo maybe, stuff like that, yes. And that would contribute to your overall lot coverage. The use of the word footprint in the draft before you was intended to mean the principal dwellings footprint. And so we may need to think about that further, because taking in the aggregate, you're taking into account all of those structures, you know, with a fair amount of.
How about a driveway?
Driveway would not be considered to have a lot of coverage, the same as your deck.
So what happens, right, you think about, you have a house, it's on some kind of block, or it doesn't have much of a foundation, it's mostly a soft lot. You, you have a deck, I mean, the deck is dirt or grass, you have water reporting capacity, right? So you turn the deck into a 15-foot foundation, right? You add a porch, you add an entranceway, which you can do, and then you take your shed, you make that two, so you can make your house a lot bigger. You reduce flood storage capacity, because you don't have either a minimal foundation or no foundation. You have a complete maximum foundation, 15 feet of cement around the whole thing. So when you're already rebuilding, John, you're already expanding your footprint, just by taking advantage of the bylaw where it is.
Well, that assumes people want to get rid of their sheds or decks and get rid of everything that they enjoy about their house. People, I've had, I've talked to multiple people in Pompanesette about this, and they're like, they have small decks, they don't wanna get rid of the deck. Why can't they have a little deck?
Well, what you do, right, is you make your deck large, and you're too, before you expand your house, and so it actually goes off.
No, we're not looking to have people cheat to obey the rules. We're not looking to.
No, you're not, but people. You can't control everybody, so we have those unintended consequences.
That you had not drafted a perfect zoning bylaw.
Right.
It does not exist. I was a lawyer. Lawyers live to work on the edges and change these things. There's no such thing as a perfect zoning bylaw. There's no such thing as a perfect tax code, a safe landing code. Lawyers are hired to change these things. We do the best we can. Instead of punishing people, we try to create a pathway to encourage people to do the things you want them to do.
We're not trying to punish.
So when we talk, we talk about.
We believe in property rights, but we, we need to, we need, we need to protect people from outrageous proposals.
Absolutely. You're not gonna get any Supreme to me on that, I agree.
I am not trying to punish anybody.
And I struggle with this, with Martin. I struggle with the whole McMansion thing, because I don't wanna see a McMansion. I, I would be happy with a gross lot coverage restriction in my, a gross house size restriction in my town. Can't be more than, pick a number, 3,000 square, 2,500 square feet. No, other people are not gonna agree with that.
No.
But what I'm saying is, to, to slowly start basing your zoning on the fact that people are gonna aggregate their shed, the dures to that, and make their house bigger. And what we're trying to do is preserve a way, whether you're within, without, and I don't wanna have something apply to all of Pompanesette when it doesn't mean to it.
No, that's okay.
That's, that's just, that's just gratuitous and doesn't mean. I'm trying to create a way that lets Harold Corn, Jerry Boylan, somebody who's lived in my community forever, put a small addition on their house, whether they're in or out of the floodplain, and make the property more resilient in that process. Nobody should be disagreeing with that. But I don't wanna see a result, and I heard at a prior hearing on a different board, maybe we should start denying all permits. Nothing ever changes if you do that. Nothing gets better, nothing gets improved. You want to be getting people to do things to achieve the result you want by encouraging them, that's all. And I'm happy to, I'm happy to sit down with you and try to, you know, work towards this a little bit.
You'll be sitting down with us?
Okay, yes, I am. The board is next.
I just don't, I just don't wanna, okay. So, all right, so that, that was comments on, any other comments on paragraph A?
According to one, on the, on top of the house cover, the deck is considered a type of, whether it's ten by fourteen or whatever. That's considered a type of, a lot of. I have a patio, and the first patio is not going to show it, it's just, first, you're like a wall.
We're hearing that, no, that does not contribute to your footprint.
The only structure I'm aware of that is at grade is a pool. A pool is a structure, it comes in the building code and contributes to lot coverage. But absent a pool, any hard scape, any driveway, whatever, is not a structure and does not contribute to that coverage.
All right, so can I ask a small question? So when this gets rewritten the next time, do we need, how, how do you wanna deal with?
Well, I, I.
It's really confusing the way it's.
Yep, okay, well, that's one of your comments. I can't rewrite it right now.
No, no, I'm just saying.
Not asking you to.
Well, Scooby, aren't we dealing with Pompanesette in the second part? Properties in the floodplain zone overlay district and or poppy overlay?
Yeah, you're turning us into a special case here. You're not asking Pirates Cove to do anything. You're saying that, properties within the floodplain have wanted to waive the scene, and then you're saying, in one community in Mashpee, Pompanesette, we also want, want you to comply with this. I'm not quite sure why that's happening. We do have properties that are not located in the floodplain.
Okay, maybe another category. We need properties not in the flood.
Two properties that are located within the floodplain. Take out the old ones.
I have no issue doing that in board's.
And Martin, that's why I did that, was because you have, you have existing drainage challenges. And so you have properties contiguous with your floodplain area that are contributing to your drainage problems. That's the logic.
Who should be trying to be a drainage on their property, and the building inspector should be, you know, bill inspectors overwork, but we should be trying to make sure that when a house is built or amended, they're putting in the dry wells, they're having to keep the drainage off the park.
So I do understand your position.
Most of them like to be recognized, Bob, you don't want to be recognized?
Not in that way, right? So it does bring up, because you're talking about drainage, right? It does, it does bring up our stormwater zoning bylaw. I think there needs to be a little bit of analysis. I think there's some, some special permits that, that are granted without seeing if they're properly designed for the stormwater. And that, that drainage issue might be handled in that way, and we might have to do more to that.
There are a couple procedural, I think, gaps that exist under the bylaw. It's a special permit use, right, where this is your place in your house. Raising the places, since raising the place was adopted, have not gone to the plan to be committed, and then were violated, so it's straight in board appeals.
Are they supposed to?
Well, I think a literal reading of our zoning bylaw generally asks the planning committee to evaluate the special permit applications and make the bylaw recommendations. The Board of Appeals does a good job of capturing that feedback outside of the planning committee meeting, but it is generally a procedural requirement for every other special permit use in the town. And then I'd say the other component is the stormwater management sections of the bylaw are not probably, they could be more substantially considered through deliberations. It's like, oh, you gotta dry well, good, but like, there's a number of other requirements in that stormwater management bylaw that, that pertain to special permit uses and I think are remaining to special permit applications for these places that get glossed over. And so these are, these are things that I think the next planner or the building commissioner now needs, need work through with whomever the special permit grantee is, presumably the Board of Appeals, case of the existing condition.
You watch his meetings, it's all put in a 500-gallon dry well. And then the next question, well, well, when it rains, what, what range, how many gallons of water, oh, we don't know. And that, and that's a question that needs to be answered, is if it rains an eighth of inch, quarter inch, half inch, how much water is actually being, just 'cause you put in the dry well?
I think this is, you know, special permit uses in Mashpee are supposed to deliver to the stormwater managing authority a stormwater or water quality report, accompanied by a formal report. I don't believe because it's residential, you are exempt from those requirements in the bylaw, but I don't see them being.
And we also, and we also have low-impact development that kinda gets glossed over in a lot. In some neighborhoods, it might end up being impossible to do that, but in some neighborhoods, it should be. Okay.
Are the new EEP rigs that are getting, they're doing land subject, but both of them are lower in stormwater. So there's two different processes going on. How, has anybody looked at what they're proposing for?
So we're gonna try to get out of here and.
That and that is on.
Thirty.
Could I ask one more question?
It's eight oh five, it's eight oh five, and we're, I think we need to do B, C, and exceptions one and two. Go ahead, Cam.
Let's see, B, we're, we're talking about property in the floodplain zone overlay district and or poppy overlay. B, a replacement structure that proposes to continue a pre-existing setback non-conformity. Okay, so if you want to increase the building height in that, within the non-conforming areas, that should be, it's the same thing as the first one, isn't it? The, back here on, on the properties outside. It's a repeat.
It's not, well, it's slightly different, it is slightly different. So in, in one, A, this is saying, if you have a side setback non-conformity, you can keep that non-conformity, you can expand that non-conformity, and you can go straight up.
Okay.
And this one is saying, you can maintain that non-conformity, but you're going to the setback line to your vertical road, that's the difference.
So that's that height thing?
So if, and I, I think I've heard a lot, if we're gonna make mirror, or merge and not have form in the road, this section seems to have some consensus for pre-existing non-conforming lots.
Town line.
Of both.
Town lines.
Well, it should be town lines. Well, that, I think if I were to modify this today, I would remove the dual pathway and maintain language like this relative to side setback.
So we're all self-aware.
But have a town line.
Town line.
This is just a floodplain, and this happens to be this one.
Right, if I were to rewrite this today, I would remove the dual pathway.
Can you explain the new pathway again?
Yeah, so like, one is, if you're in the floodplain, floodplain has, you know, is, is, has unique conditions and, and poppy, floodplain and poppy. And I am sure that not always usually exists. Then a certain criteria applies. In the floodplain and in poppies, no structural expansion, no vertical growth in setback non-conformities, whereas you can do both outside of the floodplain. So in an amendment, if we're going to remove the dual pathway, would look, I think, closer to what is currently proposed for floodplain and poppy. However, we have lot coverage issues to work for.
Yes.
Okay, the next one is about impervious surfaces. Reconstruction of a single or two-family dwelling that makes any part on the lot outside the building footprint impervious shall be considered substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
So my intention on this was to not consider your house as impervious, to not consider a patio as impervious. This is really about your driveway, not the water.
Yes, can we just change?
Keep it there?
Previously existing impervious surfaces, services, just say previously existing driveways. We have to make it address driveways. Boom, driveways are out.
Because I think the, the important part of this is like, for patios, and this is, I think we discussed this at some point, you still are supposed to be complying with the stormwater management standards under the bylaw. So we have a patio that's like cheating water into your neighbor, that's supposed to be a problem. Which is why it's important we consider the existing stormwater, say, there, established in the bylaw as we're reviewing this, but it, it is intended to be driveways. My, my initial purpose and intent for that language was what you had just said, and I would be comfortable with doing that so long as the board was, but that, that, my intention.
Sorry, I missed that, is it, are you four impervious driveways, impervious driveways?
Impervious driveways.
Okay, so we heard somebody.
But that, that could be town line, I don't know why that's gonna be just Pompanesette and not, not it's code, not.
Most places in Massachusetts, impervious driveways are possible and are better for their waters.
Yeah, I agree.
There's, there's, there's a very strong theory, and I think it's, to me, it's fact.
I think people.
That, that gravel driveway, what we think is, is impervious is actually impervious, because it's, it's compacted. So you have to have that stormwater bylaw.
I agree, but that would be, I think that would be town line.
So like, from a, just like a passive, I would say, what people would say, I think, but I would be conservative, bringing it to town media is, I don't have a drainage problem, I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna shovel my gravel driveway in winter. That's what I would anticipate and sticking to.
That's moving.
That's true.
Do I believe that everybody's helping now?
Town, town by snowboard.
But, but our community was in favor of impervious driveways.
Well, I think, I think you're, you're, I think, you just, you just need, why are they, why are they in favor of impervious driveways? Because they feel it helps with drainage, right? So you, so do you know what I'm saying? That might not be the solution. Your goal is to improve the drainage and the resiliency.
Yeah.
We have to be careful of just assuming, of getting feedback that you can't just assume that a gravel driveway is better.
About previously existing impervious surfaces shall be replaced with impervious materials. I brought this to my community, and they said, we are okay with telling us, take the driveways out when you're doing the reconstruction and putting something that is gonna improve drainage, we're okay with it. So I'm reacting to what you guys gave.
Oh, you're very, you're saying, yeah, right, but there's more to it than that.
I understand, I'm addressing what's with the front line of this language.
Did you have comment, Mary, that gravel roads do get compacted and do more around than normal? So, maybe instead of trying to say it like it is, you say you simply have to collect runoff from impervious surfaces and infiltrate it on your property.
That's currently.
Right.
Well, that's currently violating, that's violating. What are we doing in that?
Well, people don't read that section of the bylaw.
Well, shame on them.
People don't, people just say, see that?
It's not enforced, but I think we had the point, I think we all were talking about the same thing. Yeah, because we did.
You should see when I try to do that, um, yeah, my, even my board engineer kind of freaks out about it, so we're gonna, we're gonna start doing it.
Well, okay, I'm here, I drive, but if you want to.
No, it, it greatly slightly, and, and this was all, we learned this more and more in the community. I'm gonna let you go ahead, right, and go ahead now.
So if you have a impervious driveway and in the construction, it gets, you're, you're building where the driveway is, and you're gonna replace it, but if you have a driveway that's on the other side of the property, it's not being touched, are you saying you have to tear up that driveway? Is it, or is it just the driveway that has been impacted with, with the expansion?
No, we're saying that, I mean, if you're, you would need to tear up the driveway, but keep in mind, for raising a place particularly on smaller lots, you're, you're digging up a lot of yard, because you're likely improving your septic system and you're, you know, removing a foundation, so I don't foresee that as not being politely limited that driveway not being impacted by the construction already is very small.
I agree.
So you wanted an exception to this, you wanted an impervious service for handicapped people?
We did have people reading this.
Where would that be inside the driveway?
Okay. So C is gonna get, uh, looked at again?
Mary, Lee, Karen, that question.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Karen.
He wanted a, an exception to impervious, he wanted a concrete or some kind of solid surface walkway for handicapped people. Would that be run parallel to the driveway, or how, how would that, what is your concept on that?
I mean, people raised it at one of our meetings.
Yeah.
And I think Alan, Alan and I were talking a little bit, if you can collect the water in this concrete, I guess.
You can filter it and keep it in the property.
If you really do.
Yeah, well, however you do.
Yeah, so, no, you could say something, you know, nothing in the bylaw, we're supposed to, intended to prohibit. You know, the appropriate accessibility and. Maybe you lend the trouble.
Excessive, just excessive loan and trouble, most anything.
Yeah, but that's a reason for your special permit granting authority to offer relief, is, is for grants and stuff. I mean, of course, nobody is trying to do that. We don't wanna have that as an unintended consequence of anything.
Okay, there are two exceptions here. The first one is if you voluntarily demolish and reconstruct a single or two-family residential structure, and the reconstruction complies with all current setbacks, lot coverage and building height, but the lot does not have sufficient frontage in the reconstruction.
Or area.
Pardon me?
Or lot area.
Or lot area, oh, or lot area, where the reconstruction will comply with all current requirements except frontage, the building commissioner may, it says may, approve by right this, this bill.
So this is just trying to provide a bylaw pathway for you to remove if you have existing non-conformities other than lot area frontage.
Right.
And you reconstruct totally compliant with 17431, and you can do so without regulatory review by the Board of Appeals.
You don't need to go to a legal place.
Correct.
And the second one is, if you voluntarily demolish and reconstruct a single or two-family residential structure with the same footprint, building height and same. with the same footprint, building height and same volume are less than what was demolished, the reconstruction may be approved by right by the building commissioner.
I'm not sure what conditions would apply that would make someone want to, to do that, given the expensive construction these days, but you never know if you buy someone that opportunity.
Yeah, I could see that, maybe some elderly person lives there and the son is kind of wealthy and he just wants to get a nice little house up for his mother. It's going to need little maintenance.
If I'm this person, because you're, you know, you're really, if you're the person in the floodplain, you, this allows the person in the floodplain to go straight to rebuild your cottage and keep it exactly as it is. Unless they trip the 15th century. Well, you're going to, right? It's like, you get compensated.
It does.
Because at that point, you know, it's like, you're going to want to build it, maybe as well go get your special permit or attempt to get your special permit.
One, one thing that, that I would like, Mary, if you think this is a good idea, land subject to coastal storm flow, put, can, put scenarios on paper for the next time we meet or send it to Mary. What are we talking about? I mean, obviously, you're saying you don't want land subject to coastal storm flow not counted at all for lot coverage, am I right on that?
Right. Hope to him.
That's what I'm saying.
I think land subject to storm flowing includes the velocity zone as well as the floodplain. I'm really trying to say this.
AO and.
It's all of it and I'm suggesting the floodplain itself, the static flat, like, not the velocity zones shouldn't be included when you go to lot coverage.
Should be included or should not?
We should have those as well.
Don't underestimate intentional conflicts. Some people do put in intentional conflicts to block development. So I, I know you can't see the logic of it, but I, I wonder if we start looking at the minutes for how that was, why that was put in there.
But it seems incredibly silly, this moment.
Well, it does.
You're a whole process.
A long time, time sets 2020, right? It could have been their intention to, 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 even though now it looks completely illogical, they might not have seen it that way.
Putting aside, we think it makes a lot of sense.
Too.
Yeah, we got, I think.
Like, I hear what you did.
I do think though, that the E P though, I have to, we have to look at the timeline here, but I don't think land subject coastal storm flow was always considered coastal wetland and wetland protection. I presume it was probably around the same time and they probably didn't realize that that was going to be an impact.
Oh, no, I think they did. Oh, no, I, I talked to people and they knew.
Well, then.
And I think it was intentional.
Oh, you said that word again. Shisey. That's a shisey move, man.
No, you got to, you got to understand, I mean, the state of Massachusetts is looking at your AAA credit rating. You're told by Wall Street, if you don't deal with resiliency, particularly all the buildings in your floodplain, we're going to pull your credit.
It's Boston, it pumps the whole. We're going to, we're going to, we're going to crash this state.
If you look at water and storms and insurance.
That's what we're talking about. We're saying we want to improve resiliency and you're coming and saying, if you don't improve resiliency, we're going to hit your credit rate. I, I don't want to resort to sort of like that kind of saying. We're trying to come up with a pathway. I, I don't want to get to a position where we're just prohibiting things and you're not going to get the results you want. You're not, okay? You don't win when that happens. You create a pathway to improve things.
I agree with improving things and I think resiliency in a building is a, is a, is necessary. I think if you look at the state, you look at our folks, they're starting to say, we need to do less building in the floodplain. I think what you're saying is you want to more.
No, absolutely not.
I'm not saying that.
No, that's not what I'm saying.
You're not fair.
You want to more construction in the floodplain. I'm trying to create pathways, especially for existing homeowners, for more resiliency in the floodplain.
You want to, let's use a better word, you want to encourage more responsible redevelopment in the floodplain. And I think what you can say today is that development that's happening in the floodplain today isn't happening all that responsibly and so we can do something to encourage.
Some may be, some may not. I don't want to issue blanket statements, some may be, some may not. I tell all those questions for today, at eight thirty.
Right, right, and it, it, it might be something, we might have to make improvements incrementally. This, this item, I don't get resolved, this all around of the zoning too. So what I would, what I would like to do is give the planning board with some options for changes to this. I would, I would honestly like to, you guys can think about it, the planning board can think about it, but I'd like to run it by the building commissioner right away. I really would. And I like this working group, I really do. I do like it. I appreciate everybody for coming. And I'm sure that, that you might all break up into smaller working groups and do some more work on it. So our, our next meeting is July 17.
July what?
Seventeenth.
Seven seventeen.
Yeah, hold on, board meeting. So, yeah, that's our next board meeting, so put that on your calendar. The reason why we, we did this is because we didn't want to wait too long. And for any type, and, and I, and I, the other board members, I think, hate this. I'm always, you know, open to special meetings like this, at a certain date. Saturday mornings, I know, is particularly a favorite for these guys. Anyways, you know, we're willing to spend some extra time on this, I think. Thank you, Karen, for studying it so diligently and bringing us through this today.
I have something to say.
I just want to say something to Bob, because, you know, I was a lawyer too. I didn't do real estate law, but personal injury and family law in Florida. And the way the law works, it's always incremental improvements. It's not, I mean, we don't have Roe v. Wade's cases like that. They don't jump from a president to the complete opposite, particularly when you had a president 50 years or whatever it was, I think, 1974. So we do have to be mindful of this, but, you know, we're, we're a little bit, you know, I read stuff like, you know, about what happened up in March, March 11. She sent me a thing on Salisbury, the beach. Did you see that? I mean, that is so upsetting. I could see that happening in Pompanesette. It hasn't happened yet, but, I mean, that erosion was unbelievable. $600,000 for sand replacement, gone in three days. So they're going to do it again and we're going to keep doing it again and again, again, because we're, we're just a sand, a land with sand, that's what we are.
He needed that last month.
Pardon me?
He needed that. Three times.
And are we? Oh, you're eventually going to lose that.
I thought ours was a super, I think, a super sand. Take that, I asked you. All of your people don't get around.
Are we ready to adjourn?
Okay.
You were trying to talk to me.
Are, are we good, are we good to adjourn?
I'll take a second.
All in favor? Aye, thanks, everybody.